One of the aides saw it and went out and bought it because they loved it so much.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. All right, so I am going to welcome new residents. Can't see everyone, so Mina Garcia, I believe she's probably moving her things in, but not quite here yet, so welcome her when she gets here, maybe a few days. And then Patricia McGraw. Hi, welcome to Patricia, or Pat? Pat? Yeah. In the South Wing. So I see you have a buddy group already here. Okay, great. Just a COVID update. So in consultation with the rest of Eddie Senior Living, as well as the medical leadership, it was very difficult to figure out what we should do about holiday visitation. So we'll continue, assuming we do not have cases ramp up here. Visitation, like if you go outside, if you go out to family member for dinner, we're about to put out some recommendations for that to your families, as well as you. We are discouraging as much as possible, you know, larger groups, as is the governor. But if you do choose to do that and you don't stay more than 24 hours, you're not required to quarantine, we just ask that you be really, really careful. It would be very difficult to control a quarantine. We are doing that over at the Terrace. If you do choose to stay overnight, we are quarantining. So there won't be any testing out of that, just because we would have a hard time controlling that and knowing what day to test and what day to come off quarantine and all of that. So that will stand kind of here, going out for a little bit until further notice and as the cases ramp up. I do not think that we got the memo out yet about the positive case on staff, right? Okay, so we did have a positive case with an IL waitstaff person. According to the county, there was no exposure here. I know that, so that is why we haven't rushed to get the message out. There was limited exposure. The county looks at if the person was unmasked and if the person had an encounter with somebody that was 10 minutes or longer. She did not. She worked a short time, she hadn't worked a couple of days prior to that, didn't have symptoms until the next day. So I will be getting that information out to all of you. We don't disclose names, but we do disclose if anyone has had any exposure, which there hasn't been. So as far as being COVID-free, unfortunately, we can't say that anymore. But let's keep it COVID-free among residents, how's that? That would be really good. What I am seeing across the board in Eddie Senior Living is not ramp up of resident cases from resident interaction. It's more, we've seen cases of residents that have gone out to the hospital. And despite all of the attempts at keeping everything very sanitized and everyone wearing PPE, they come back with having gotten it from, say, someone who shares a room with them. So I've seen two cases of that. And then it's mostly honestly staff. So we are doing our best to reinforce with staff how careful they need to be. So, you know, I guess, to me, it reinforces the need for everyone to mask and for everyone to distance when not masked, because it does, as you've heard on the news, I'm sure, it is spreading very quickly this time in this wave. So with the holiday party policy, I hope it's not too burdensome for folks, but I do hope you understand and that your families understand. Any questions on? I think that was all the COVID-related items that I wanted to talk about. Nancy?
When the time comes, we'll be very soon. When the vaccine will be sent to you, correct?
So the vaccine, the only information that I have at this point on the vaccine is that the state and the federal government, so the CDC, had, for the state, it was more like a registration process. For the CDC, it was like in the form of a survey. They asked, because we have an assisted living community on site, so for nursing homes and assisted living, and independent living with attached assisted living, they wanted numbers, numbers of people, also numbers of staff. So we have registered with New York State and we have answered the survey for CDC. So I've done them both. It might be a little overkill, because originally they were saying you only had to do one or the other. I'm not taking any chances. So we are registered with both. And hopefully what that means is that when the vaccine does come out, that we will be among the list that are prioritized to receive it. What we have done is we've selected a provider. So we had choice on each of those registration survey things. We had the choice of selecting CVS or Walgreens. We selected CVS because they currently come on site to do our flu shots and we use Omnicare, which is associated with CVS over at the Terrace. So we have experience with them, we have a vendor relationship with them. So we have selected CVS, so I believe what will happen is that the vaccine and the syringes or whatever need to come here, will come here and CVS will administer those. I still, I've heard about, you know, need to freeze slash refrigerate, so we need to get all of those details ironed out. I have none of those details yet.
Because it is, will be given in two doses.
Yeah, and again, not sure what we'll receive, when and in what form.
Yeah, because you have to make sure who has it and everybody and when they have it and the time and all that. And you may have people who say, "I won't be vaccinated."
Yes, so that is the next thing to talk about policy-wise for Eddie Senior Living and is staff and residents are, you know, there are those that feel that they don't want to be part of the first wave of the vaccine. And so we need to determine if we are going to make it mandatory for our staff. We need to make, you know, figure out what we do about kind of distinguishing between residents who do and don't take the vaccine, so. We can't force people to take the vaccine. I know, I think it would be smart of everyone to do that. I don't know if there's, you know, anyone that has a reason why they wouldn't. And so it'd be interesting to hear those perspectives if you do, because then I can, you know, discuss that with our medical staff and figure out what we can do about that. Any other questions? Okay. I like to keep an expansion project update. So we are up, we have 11 sold, two that I understand, three on hold, in addition to those 11 sold out of the 28. So we are getting very close to that 50% mark of sales. All of the larger ones, as expected, are going first. And then the Memory Care Campaign is going well as well. We received a $25,000 donation from each of our sponsors. So the Conkling Center, $25,000, as well as then the Eddie matched that. In addition, we've had some really good grants and donations so far. So I believe we are at around the $600,000 mark of our $2 million goal. Very excited about that, since we really just restarted in September, so. Any questions on the expansion? We have an interior design committee of the board and then some staff are on that committee as well. And we are in the process of selecting an interior designer, which won't come into play so much for independent living, because obviously we have something to match in independent, but in memory care, that will come into play quite a bit. So we're in the process of that and the architects are working on the detailed drawings. But that's all in the background. Okay, the last thing, I didn't put it on the agenda. Normally at this time, or not this early usually, but normally we would sometime mid-November to right before Thanksgiving, would have a budget presentation. Because of COVID, we're not having finance on site to do any kind of formal presentation. So I worked out with finance the way we could do this, and with John actually, and got his input was in order to make sure that you have the information and have a chance to ask questions, along with the increased letters that will be coming out probably next week before Thanksgiving, we will also include some kind of summary budget information that we would normally have finance present. So finance will be gathering kind of a summary of the budget for independent living and then we'll put that out with your increased letter, along with a form to ask any questions. If we get a lot of questions back and we really feel we need to have finance for that group, then what we'll do is probably schedule a virtual conference call kind of thing with finance present. I'm hoping that I can answer the questions myself, but if I need to pull in the big guns in finance, then I'll do that. All right, so that's our plan. Pat?
You know, the pie chart that she usually has?
Yes.
That would be very helpful.
That's what we're planning on. Yep, same kind of summary presentation material, some of the major assumptions, the kind of the offering plan type format of the budget and then that pie chart. Yep. All right, any other questions for me that I didn't, things that I didn't cover? All right, I'm going to turn it over to John.
Good afternoon, everybody. Snow out there today, I was, ooh, yikes. Just a couple updates for me, just a few quick things as we get into next week in the holiday. As far as reception goes for Thanksgiving Day, it's going to be 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at both desks. Obviously, more concerned here, but it'll be 10 to 2. That's just for Thanksgiving. We'll have a normal business hour schedule on Friday, on Black Friday. There will be no transportation on Thanksgiving and we have blocked off the schedule for Black Friday. However, if anyone has a medical necessity and needs to submit a transportation request for Friday, we will review that. I do have a driver available. We are trying to limit that as much as possible. But again, if you have a need, please submit it and we'll do everything we can to help you out. As Andrea kind of laid out the visitation guidelines, I want to reiterate and remind everybody that we do have inside visitation available here in the Singleton Lounge. Limit four guests per visit. And if you are interested in having an inside visit with friends or family, please have them contact reception and we can schedule a block of time to make that happen for you. With Thanksgiving, unfortunately, we still, with the visitation, we can't have people sitting and eating. They are allowed to bring prepackaged goods in. If they want to hand them over, you are welcome to bring them back to your apartment. But unfortunately, we can't sit and eat in those visitations. So it is unfortunate. But again, if you want to visit with family, if somebody wants to get up here, please, please, please have them call us and we'll work with them to make it happen. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about reception, transportation, anything for the holidays? All right, guys, I'll hand it over to Nick.
Hello.
Hi.
I was sitting at my desk thinking, "I've got nothing." But then I made a list, I do have some. We've now had just about two weeks of Brian, which is a good thing, not a bad thing. I'm sure you've seen him and we're starting to catch up on some work orders, so that's good. I also had a second interview with a ground, or I'm scheduling a second interview with a grounds person for this Thursday. Just talked to him on the phone today and it's funny, I was complaining, John, this is the person I was complaining about, because I didn't think he was going to show up for an interview. So I'm saying gosh and darn and some bad things about him. And then I go and I read my email and he sent me a very nice email saying he woke up, he wasn't feeling quite right and wasn't sure if he could come into our building and he wanted to make sure everything was okay. So it's like, he's off to the right start, so. We'll meet on Thursday. Let's see, I'm also looking for a security person for two nights a week. And that's going to be a tough one to fill, but we can do that. Also, just a reminder that old man winter is knocking on our door. Please, just make sure you don't sleep with the windows opened and a lot of you are nodding your heads, like, "Why would anybody do that?" Trust me, we had at least three do that and pipes froze and broke and not only is it very upsetting to you, the person that lives below you is not having a good time either. So let's start shutting the windows and locking them up. Hopefully by the time we have our meeting next month, I'll be telling you the same thing, because we haven't had any snow, but I'm just reminding everybody to be patient. Cars will be cleared off when the snow stops and lots have been plowed, sidewalks have been cleared. And the last thing I have is Monday after Thanksgiving, the trees go up. So if anybody wants to see Christmas spirit at its best, come on down and between Doug and, let's see, Rob and Chris, they'll be having a good time. I don't know if this is a selling point, but rumor has it Doug will be wearing an elf costume. So you might want to come in and see that. Notice I said it at 3:20. He should be halfway to Granville, so he did not hear that. I will deny ever saying it. And usually Chris follows me, he's not here, I don't know. Then you, okay.
Good afternoon, everybody. Let's see, first Medicare open enrollment. The last day for that, to switch your plan or to look into other options, December 7th. That'll be closing. I got some information from Office for the Aging on local representatives that can talk to you about any of the supplements that are available in the area, advantage plans, a whole listing of those. And I have all the comparisons on pricing and everything and also on prescription drug plans. So if you need any information on who to contact locally, I've got that for you. The adoptive family, I know you've all received a memo and some of you have already responded to us. Thank you for your interest in that. And some have even gone out and, I think we're all set on Hanaford gift cards. We already have $125 for the family for a holiday meal, so that's a nice thing. We may have a couple of different times set aside to do the wrapping this time so that we can, you know, adhere to the distancing and we'll probably each need our own six-foot table to work at, but we can work with that and set it up. So please, if you haven't reached out and you're interested in this family with four children, three girls and a boy, and want to help out, that would be great. Get in touch with Corey or Corey or myself. The other thing was the consent form. I think I have most of them back. I think there was probably eight or 10 left that I put in boxes last Friday, or last Thursday. And so if you don't, if you haven't filled out a consent form that my position through Eddie VNA is changing over to directly work for the Glenn, if you could see me and I have those sheets right on the outside of my door, you can pick one up and sign that for me, that would be great. Any questions for me? Yeah.
Do you know the ages of the children?
Yes, I do have those. There's, for the oldest is 13, a girl. Another girl is 11. Another one is seven and the little boy is a year and a half.
So the idea was that we were going to get tags?
Tags, yes. I am printing the labels, that's what I was, thank you, Corey. Activity's keeping me on track here. I'll have those available by the end of the week to pick up in the office or if someone isn't getting out and they want to give Corey or I a call, we can deliver a tag to them and help with shopping, if you need help with that or, you know, make an arrangement to get a gift so we can wrap it up and have a delivery on the 13th? Middle of December, yeah. December 15th will deliver to Family Services. So thanks for your participation in that. Who, Venus? Okay, Venus is up next.
This is like the ninth inning stretch, everybody, or the seventh inning stretch.
Well, hello, everyone. So I have a few things. Tomorrow's Kendra's Wellness Cranberries. I believe EJ is doing cranberry scones delicious at 2:00 in this area. We do have the Turkey Trot coming up. I think Corey will talk a little more about that, that is this Wednesday at 2:30. We have our Unidine chef, Steve Gadsden, who is doing the virtual culinary this month and he's doing sweet potato pork stuffing, which we'll be offering this Thursday. Just to review the Thanksgiving procedures, because I know everybody has been asking about that. We're basically going to do the same thing we're always, we've always done right along since COVID. So you'll fill out your forms at least by 10:00 that morning and hand them, put them outside your doors, we'll come along and get them. If you're having guests or if you're having reservations, especially if you're doing more than four people, we need to know that as soon as possible. Otherwise, you can write dine-in on your paper when you hand it in. Is that clear? Does anybody have any questions on that? No, everybody's good? Okay. In December, we're doing a daily events, which Corey, I'm sure will be talking more about that. We're traveling the countries and doing food items every day for that. And then Chris wanted to do a family heirloom recipe for the month of December. So basically, if you have any special family recipes that you would like to give us that we could try on a given night or if you have something that you would like to give to us that, or just tell us the name of it and we can research a recipe for it and serve it. But that is, I put those out at your apartments this afternoon, so you should have them when you get back there. It would be kind of fun to have family heirloom recipes brought in. So if you have them, please bring them to us. That's it. Any questions for me? No? Corey?
All right, so, yes, as Venus mentioned, next week is Turkey Trot. Dave, those of you who were here last year, Kendra kind of runs it like she did the Alzheimer's Walk, just some fun and games and some music and everything. Everyone's encouraged to kind of dress up silly like a turkey if you want to, feathers in your hair or wherever. So, and that's right here. And I know dining, the lunch special is going to be their Thanksgiving wrap that they do with the turkey and the cranberry sauce and so. And then just a few general things for December that are coming up. I've ordered some more Great Courses, those seem to be going well. I know right now the Great President's Lecture that we're doing is usually almost a full capacity of 10. I have also, we've ordered one on the solar system, which Amy's been showing to the Terrace residents. We're going to start that over here. The History of the CIA, which looks very interesting. And also one on North American birding to kind of bring us into the spring when our birds start to come back. And that is tied in with National Geographic. So the photography for those is absolutely wonderful. I'm also working a lot more with a company called Eventbrite, which puts out links to Zoom presentations and they are so involved around the world that you have to specify which ones you want in English, because they come in all different languages. Saturday, I actually really enjoyed myself with Pat Carr. I came in and she and I watched the Zoom on Monet and it looked at him and two other impressionists and kind of their path that they walked along the Thames in London and what they painted. And he did a comparison of Monet's paintings with what it looks like today and very, very knowledgeable. And this gentleman that did it has a bunch of other tours like that that he does. So watch for those. If there's anyone who is, deems themselves tech savvy enough and you would like the email that I get that lists all these, just the other day when I was trying to find one for this Friday, there were over 400 and some odd pages just for Friday, the 20th of different Zooms I was looking at. And they're all different categories of subjects. So if anyone's interested and wants that, I can always forward you the email. Once you do one, then you'll start getting the emails yourself. A lot of them are free, some of them charge a minimal fee because they're trying to support the organization that's putting the Zoom out, so. Entertainment for the holidays. So it was suggested, because of allowing visitation in the Singleton Lounge, that maybe we could look at doing entertainers separated in the Singleton Lounge. And similar to like we do here, the mics that both project out here and in the Conkling Room, put those in there and then musicians would be separated. You guys could still have live entertainment. However, currently our normal people that come in, single piano players, do not feel comfortable coming into the building. It's not that they're worried they're going to catch something from you. They all feel like if they brought something in, they would feel horrible. So at this point, they're just not comfortable. I haven't given up though, so I'm going to reach out to a few more. But I started with those tried and true entertainers that I know everybody loves. You know, Steve Keller that plays the piano for us and this such. So if anybody thinks of anyone else that you know you really like who has come in that I can reach out to, let me know and we'll give it a try. So as Venus alluded to, dining, doing something every day of the week, we are, along with Beverwick and Glenn Eddie, two of our sister communities, we are going to be doing for the month of December, Christmas around the world. Every day will be a different country. You guys will get a separate calendar for the month. It'll let you know which country we're celebrating that day. And it may be a special appetizer that's tied to that country. It may be a happy hour drink that's tied to that country. We are also going to be looking at doing what's called a grab and go. So for a short 30-minute session on a Saturday or Sunday, there will be some wrapped pastries tied to that country or something. Or if it's something more involved, one of us staff members will be in to serve it. But it'll be tied in. And then we'll also be doing at least one activity that day that represents the country, whether it's a historical video, it's a game from the country. But given the fact that this is obviously, as we have heard so much for the past eight months, an unprecedented year, we're really trying to find different ways that we can keep you all involved and in the holiday spirit with the limited contact that unfortunately so many are going to have as they normally would. So.
Are you going to have the beautiful trees that we had last year?
No, no, yes, of course, yes. Yes, yes. So I believe, as most of you knew, Bella, that we hired, we hired her because she was so wonderful here and putting up the trees. So I think she is working with Nick on that. I'm helping them get out, they were all wrapped and preserved. My thought is so they're easier to My thought is so they're easier to disinfect, we just keep the wrapping on them. But it was a joke, everybody. Wow. So yes, so they will work on getting the trees up and we'll work on getting decorations and everything. So what's that?
Renee is falling for it.
I know. Well, considering how many things, when we first started, we used to disinfect at the back door. I mean, Mother's Day plants were going to be disinfected and everything, so why not the Christmas trees? Next week, I am actually on vacation, so I'm unfortunately not going anywhere like the rest of you, but I will be on vacation. Amy and Bella and we're lucky enough to have Debbie coming back until she goes back to Florida at the end of January. So they'll be covering different activities next week. So hopefully you won't miss a step. You'll all still get to do what we normally have on the schedule to do. And then the last thing I have that I'm going to officially announce publicly, I know most people probably know, especially if you follow Facebook, but Amy will be leaving us. So fortunately, we really don't know when. So initially, she was going to be with us through the 27th in her regular position as my activities assistant, continuing her regular schedule to get through my vacation of next week. And then at that point, she will go down to a per diem position because as most of you know, through this school year, I'm working a little bit of an adjusted schedule so that I can be home with my daughter when need be for class, which right now I'd rather be at work every day than most parents being home helping their kids distant learn. But so she is going to stay on per diem at this point through the end of the school year. So you're still going to see her. She's still going to be around. She will still be covering days that I am away or not here or coming in later. I believe I have found a person to fill that position. So I'm working right now with HR to get an offer out. Her name is actually Erin Dixon, absolutely no relation. She's younger, she's very enthusiastic. She has almost every day been like, have you made a decision? I'm so excited. So but so hopefully, you know, we'll be able to get her in and have a smoother transition than others in power of switching over. So we'll, we'll see here. Anybody have anything for me? No? All right. Going once, twice. Okay. Okay, after all that, anything for me? Okay, thanks, everyone.